All right. Well, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the June 25th Board of Supervisors meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Good morning, Supervisor Leopold.
Here.
Bren.
Here.
Capit.
Here.
McPherson.
Here.
And Chair Coonerty.
Here. I'm going to ask people to have a, take a moment of silence and then rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in visible liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Plasis, are there any changes to our agenda today?
Yes, we have a few corrections and additions. On the regular agenda, item number seven, there's additional materials, revised attachment B, packet page 21. On the consent agenda, on item 45, there's additional materials, revised attachment B, packet page 592. Item 52, there's additional materials, revised memo, packet page 638. And then we have an addenda on the consent agenda. This is item 73.1, which states authorize the Chair of the Board to write to Governor Newsom before the July 9th, before July 9th, 2019 deadline, to urge the governor to use his authority to require a consistency review of Bureau of Land Management's Central Coast Field Office proposed resource management plan amendment and final environmental impact statement for oil and gas leasing as recommended by Supervisor Coonerty. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now, are there any board members that would like to pull any items today? Okay, seeing none, we're now going to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to us about items that are not on today's agenda but are within the purview of the Board of Supervisors. It's also an opportunity for you to speak about items that are on our consent agenda, or if you can't stay later because you have to get to work or have another obligation and you'd like to speak to us about items on your regular, the regular agenda, this is your opportunity. If you'd like to speak today, please rise, you know, get in line and speak when you'd like to.
Good morning. Clay Kemp, Executive Director of the Seniors Council and Area Agency on Aging. As your boards are aware, the city of Watsonville has defunded the Watsonville Senior Center via the Association of Watsonville Area Seniors, and I would encourage the Board to be involved in that process. And the reason I'm encouraging that is a very large percentage of the funding that the county provides to senior programs is distributed or delivered at the Watsonville Senior Center. So if that center loses its infrastructure, the funding that all of you are providing gets at risk or gets affected and not in a positive way. That center has a long history of problems and challenges, so I'm not necessarily here to say that you should fund it or take action to keep it under the current structure, but whatever structure evolves out of that, this Board and the county is very invested in terms of the commitment you've made to the programs that serve there. So at this time, the center is being looked at by a closed committee of the City Council, which does not have public input. None of the providers or funders are at the table. I really just encourage your Board to get involved or assign staff to do so. We, as the probably second largest or maybe first largest funder of that center, are also trying to be part of the committee that develops the future of it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shalak Kavanas, and I have the honor of serving as the Chairperson to the Mental Health Advisory Board for Santa Cruz County. I'm coming here to say thank you for your support. We've had a lot of turnover this year, and you guys done amazing job of filling those seats. We're really awesome to see the South County Behavioral Health Facility up. I know there's been a lot of setbacks with PG&E. The investment that you've done with our VA Center has been awesome. I also want to say that Greg Kaput's been almost at every meeting. Thank you so much. Eric Riera, the Director of Behavioral Health, has been at almost every meeting to provide insight and support, and we have an amazing staff person by the name of Jane, I'm going to mess it up a little bit, Boons Kurtwirfski, who's just been an amazing job of helping support. So from the Mental Health Advisory Board, thank you so much for your guys' support and helping us keep the best job running we can.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Roseanne Ferris, and I'm a registered nurse at Watsonville Community Hospital, and we, the nurses here, found out June 6th that there's the possibility of our hospital being in the process of being sold. And we have serious concerns and are holding a urgent community healthcare town hall, and this will be on July 14th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Watsonville City Council chambers, and we're inviting the community and definitely the supervisors to come and attend. We would like to discuss how we can work together to safeguard vital services for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Coonerty, Honorable Members of the Board. I'm here this morning to introduce some of our new leadership at Health Services Agency. And first, I'll start off introducing our new medical director, and then I'll turn it over to Eric Riera to introduce our new children's director. So Tyler Evans is, he'll say a few moments, a few words about himself, but he joins us as our new medical director at our Emmeline Clinic. He will also serve temporarily as the Chief Medical Officer until we have that approved, position approved in our budget, and we'll go through the process of having a Chief Medical Officer position to oversee the work in all of our clinics. And we're very, very pleased to have him join us, and I'd like him to just say a few words about himself.
Thanks. Great to be here. I know I have two minutes, so I'll kind of speak quickly, but I just want to tell you a little bit about my background. So prior to this, I was Chief Medical Officer for an FQHC, Fairly Qualified Health Center in Orange County. So we were mostly focusing on the homeless, looking at substance abuse, a number of other issues too, that are affecting sort of underserved populations. Prior to that, I was the National Director of Infectious Disease at the largest community-based HIV organization in the U.S. And then I was also the Infectious Disease Director at an FQHC up in New York, started a refugee clinic up there, and started actually a Refugee and Asylum Health Coalition up in New York City. I like to describe myself as sort of a humanitarian first, who happens to be a doctor. I also worked at Indian Health Service, I was Community Health Director over there, and served a number of missions with MSF, Medicine Sans Frontières, Doctors Without Borders, working in Sudan, working in Congo, actually heading back out to Congo next month, focusing on gender-based violence, and a little bit on Ebola as well. Worked on the Ebola response back in 2014, 2015 with Partners in Health. I am coming back next month, so, you know, no worries there. And, you know, I just really want to kind of sort of dig in and focus as much as I possibly can on the issues that are affecting Santa Cruz. You know, I'm really happy to be here. I know we have a number of populations that need a lot of help, and I just want to help out as much as possible, so.
Thank you, and welcome to the county.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Not much of that.
I wish you had picked someone with experience.
Good morning, Board. I'm Eric Riera, I'm the Behavioral Health Director, and it's my honor today to introduce Lisa Gutierrez-Wang. She is our new children's director and comes to us from the Bay Area, and I'm also going to ask her to say a few words about herself as well.
Hello, good morning. It's an honor to be here, and I'm very excited to step into this position. I was born in Watsonville, and most of my family is here, so it's wonderful and a homecoming of sorts to be serving Santa Cruz County. I'm a clinical psychologist, and as Eric mentioned, most recently have been working in San Francisco County. I was the Director of Clinical Programs at Center for Youth Wellness, a nonprofit organization started by our California Surgeon General, Nadine Burke Harris. So the work was really focused on identifying children who have been exposed to early life adversities or childhood adverse experiences. And so I look forward to working with a dedicated team of childrens. I've been so welcomed since coming in, this is my fourth week, and I look forward to supporting them in our continued work with children, youth, and families. I'll also note that it's been amazing to see the partnerships that we have and the strong working relationships that we currently have with Family and Children Services and Juvenile Probation, and I look forward to continuing to really strengthen those. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome home.
Thank you.
Ellen Turelake, Director of Human Services Department, Chair Coonerty, members of the Board. It's an exciting time to work in health and human services. I want to welcome our colleagues from the Health Department, and I also have the distinct pleasure of introducing you to Keith Bostick. He is our new Child Welfare Director. He comes from the state of Georgia, where he was the Director of Child Welfare Services for the state. He also has held positions in the past of the Deputy Commissioner for Early Care and Learning, as well as extensive background in behavioral health in Florida. And so I'll let him say a couple of words, but we are thrilled to have such a leader of national prominence working in our county.
Thank you, Ellen. Good morning. It's exciting to be here and be before you. As she indicated, I'm Keith Bostick, and I come to you by way of Georgia. I have been in the child welfare arena for the last 38 years, providing an array of services, direct services as well as leadership roles. This opportunity here in Santa Cruz, you know, is just an awesome one. One that I come to with recognizing the great partnerships and great teamwork that's already here. My colleague Lisa and I actually started on the same day, so mental health and child welfare had this unique relationship from the start. My philosophy is that I care about children, families, and communities, and the communities they live in and the communities that they come from. My focus also is how do we normalize that it is each and every one of our responsibilities to ensure the well-being of each other? You know, I describe it as, the work that I do is provide services and supports to children, families, and communities who happen to have. And when I share it like that, I can do the parallel process with each of you and say that at some point in time, each of you will have a need or will happen to have a need. And so when we begin to look at it like that, then we can lift each other up. And so I'm real excited about the opportunities here, I'm real excited about the work that children and families are doing, as well as its strong partnership. And so I look forward to having a connection and to working shoulder to shoulder with you.
Welcome, welcome. It's nice to have you.
Good morning. I'm Paul Binding from the Agricultural Commissioners. I'm addressing item 46 on the agenda, which is the request from the Agricultural Commissioner want Hidalgo to accept and file the annual report. And I wanted to make mention that this is a very, it's a milestone here for us. It's 25 years on July 3rd that we made our first entry, our first service request and treatment for mosquitoes, and since then, we started Two Men and a Mule pretty much in 94. And now we've got a very inspired staff, a nice facility. Thank you, Board, for that. And also, thanks through the years. I know you weren't there for the starting of this district, but you and your staff have really been helpful in making us a success. And our objectives for this year are to increase public knowledge of our services, and especially the underserved part of the community. Also, our secondary objective is to reduce greenhouse gases. We hope to have a special 25-year party at our open house, and I hope you can attend that later in the year. I'm going to put some copies of, if you accept the, or item on consent, I'll put some copies in the back of the room for anyone that doesn't have a hard copy that wants to take one. Otherwise, I'll distribute them electronically, and they'll be on our website. So thank you very much, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on 25 years.
As I listen to people talk about health and the well-being of the community, there's an area of damage to our health that is almost always eliminated, not discussed, and that's exposure to biologically damaging microwave radiation from wireless sources. Now, I think I gave you a copy of this DVD called 5G Apocalypse: Extinction Event. Is that correct? And can I have an indication who saw it? This is very important to understand what this is about, and I'm going to, it needs to be halted. We're in big trouble from these exposures, the tremors I have, I call microwave tremors. Cell tower tsunami to hit your neighborhood soon. Verizon has proposed to erect over 80 new cell facilities in Santa Cruz County. Local officials have admitted that the telecom industry plans to install more than 40 small cell antennas per square mile in our community and front of our homes in all of our neighborhoods. With the collusion of federal, state, and local governments, telecom corporations are permitted to violate our health and safety with ever-increasing levels of microwave radiation. Thousands of existing U.S. cell towers violate federal emission limits, some by as much as 600%. Once installed, these towers are not monitored, and the industry may broadcast at any level. Thousands of peer-reviewed studies by scientists independent of the industry conclusively prove serious long-term health effects from current exposure to wireless technologies, especially for children. These include cancer, neurological disorders including ADHD and ADD, heart disease sterility including permanent DNA damage, diabetes, tinnitus, headaches, and insomnia. New generation technology, 4G and 5G, is exponentially more harmful as it has shorter microwave pulse frequencies. We are being, let's see, subjected to a dangerous experiment without our informed consent. We need to stop this assault and genuinely protect our community. Thank you.
Brent Adams of the Warming Center Program. I'm super excited to share Connecting the Dots. It's a, it's meant to be a partner to the Point in Time Count. It's a survey that we do every year with student interns. This year, we used eight student interns from USCSE, from the Sociology Department. What it does is asks 30 questions of people, unfortunately, people sleeping in and around the downtown core, so it doesn't speak completely about the county homelessness population, it's about the homeless, and asks 30 questions, like where do people go to the bathroom? Where do you get drinking water? Where did you, where do you normally sleep? Have you had citations in the last 12 years? We think it's a really important data set for your thinking about funding and what's really happening out there, because there's a lot of information about homelessness, but no needs-oriented data set. And of course, maybe it seems a little strange that the Warming Center would be giving something like this, but what we do is we don't put our name on it, it's student interns who don't address it. So it's not really an academic survey, but it does give you a picture into local homelessness, and I hope you look at it. Last year, it informed the need for a storage program. More than 80% of people said they needed storage immediately. We're just celebrating our first year with the storage program, day and night storage program within downtown Santa Cruz. Almost 500 people have used the program so far. 200 people are currently on the shelves. If you go downtown, it's a vastly different look and feel than it was two years ago, where we had piles of things up and down the street. Now there's nothing. People can walk around without having to carry the burden. Now the data set is informing that what people need immediately is laundry services. You might have heard about the Laundry Van, but it's a very small program. We're opening it at the, at the storage program called Laundry Wednesdays. Anyway, I'm really excited to share this with you. I'll give you to, you a copy. It's also, if you go to warmingcenterprogram.com, you can see all of our work there and the data sets there, and also the methodology. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I'll bring this back to the Board for, sorry, sir? Do we, no, not you, Brent.
Still public comment?
Yes, this will be our final public comment, unless there's someone else who'd like to speak to it. Please use the microphone if you, if you don't mind.
Okay, Michael Stewart Duffy, 2613 Monterey Avenue, SoCal. Okay, at one time, I told you a while ago, I have a life estate now, you know, I had the property or whatever like that, have a life estate, but it's kind of bunk if, if I have a studio and a life estate and the studio gets caught on fire, and, and then the landlord, the guy who's now taking over, Rob Long, takes it over and starts dumping my stuff. He takes the stuff out of the studio, and, and, and now he's, he's went over the field and plowed down the field, and he's got a motor home out in the field now. So the place is really worse than it was, and plus, I don't like the idea of having my stuff stolen, because that's exactly what happened. I mean, I mean, if you have stuff one day and it's not there the next, or it's, or it's somewhere else, it's moved of, like, my car that was there when I, when I first had the stroke, my car was there when I came back, the car's moved out into the field, and now it doesn't have a window, it has all kinds of problems, and, and, and just last week, he moved all kinds of stuff. He started, started trying to fix up the area, but what he did was just, he just plowed a lot of the wood and debris over next to the car, what was left of the car. And I'm just really getting tired of it, and, and I tried to talk to him the other day about it, and try to get any problem. Well, you know, he's, I can do whatever I want, type of thing. I go, well, you know, don't I have any authority? Don't I have a type of a okay to do stuff? And he's like, whatever, I can't, can't explain what's in his mind. All I know is that I was supposed to get so much money per, per month, and I haven't seen that lately, so I guess I gotta call the lawyers and stuff. Also, another thing, just a side note, I heard that the farm is back on the knowledge. I heard you, you were there the other day, and, but I didn't get to go to the meeting, I didn't hear anything in advance or anything, so. So is the farm going to be, I heard a long time ago that we're going to make the farm into a community center, and, and that's why they allowed them to build all the low-income housing, and they haven't done that. So I'm wondering, is SoCal going to eventually get a SoCal museum?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the time's up.
Yeah, yeah. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to us today? Seeing none, I'll now close public comment and bring it back to the Board for action on the consent agenda. These are items 70, or 7 through 73.1 on our agenda. Or, sorry, sorry, 11 through 73.1 on our agenda. Supervisor Leopold?
Good morning, Chair. I just have a couple of items that I wanted to talk about and add additional direction on two items. The first item is item number 36, which is the report on measures to reduce the number of people held in jail before trial. As we talked about during budget hearings, this is an issue that's affecting future planning for facilities. This item proposes that we only get an annual report. I think we should get at least a report twice a year, and ask that we get this report back in January, so we can track to see how the concurrent rate is going and, and how we're doing on our pre-trial release program. On item number 38, I'm very glad to see, as the Sheriff's Office talked about during budget hearings, that the sexual assault forensic examiner program will be returning to Dominican Hospital after having been over the hill. This is an issue in which we hear a lot from members of the public, and I appreciate the work of the Sheriff's Office to ensure that we have appropriate staff and that the needs of women who are sexually assaulted can have their needs met here in Santa Cruz County rather than having to go over to Santa Clara County. On item number 44, I want to appreciate our Workforce Investment Board and their work on these pre-apprenticeship grant. The apprenticeship program is a very worthwhile program. I had the pleasure of attending a graduation program last year. When you see the numbers of people who are in apprenticeships or in jobs, you can see that it really works out pretty well, and I'm really glad of the leadership by our office, and I'm glad to see Monterey County coming along to do their part as well. On item number 48, which is the Vacation Rental Hosted Rental Status Report, this is, according to the order, and it's supposed to be an annual report, and I hope we see this annually. I want to give an additional direction that we, that they come back in December with some kind of waiting list program for those areas where there's limits on each block. It's become a problem with people who live in the neighborhood losing out the opportunity to have a vacation rental to someone who's just moving into the neighborhood. We have work to make sure that the permit doesn't go with the house, that it goes with the individual, and the individual moves it becomes available, and we have to find a better program for that. So I, I've talked with the Planning Director, and I'm asking to come back in December with a waiting list program, so that can better serve the needs of people who live here. I think that's all.
Okay. Supervisor Bren.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. I do have a couple of things. On item 32, which is expressing, an item with Supervisor McPherson, to express the commitment to create an age-friendly environment specifically on applying for the AARP, Age-Friendly Community Status. This is specifically to support and complement the work that's already been done by the Seniors Council, and so we'd just like to have additional direction that specifies specifically that this is to support and complement the work that the Seniors Council is doing. On item 33, Supervisor Coonerty, I appreciate you bringing this item forward, just maybe some additional clarification to also include our local delegation as those that would be included in the letter would be useful. On item 48, I support Supervisor Leopold's comments. I also like to make a couple of comments, which is to note, this is on the vacation rental component, that in the last five years, we've seen a more than doubling in the number of permits per year, the number of vacation rentals. From five years ago to now, we have nearly 100 a year. We're not building 100 new units a year, so I think that there is a real significant impact on our housing stock. And so there's two things I'd like to see as part of this December report back. One of them is that there's a statement in the report that talks about the number of about 200 permits that have expired since 2016, and I just want a little information as to why. I mean, was it that the Board had initiated a requirement that you actually not park on a permit in order to increase the value of your house, but you had to use it? So are these people that aren't using their permits, or are these people that decided that they didn't want to become vacation rentals anymore? And if so, what happened to the status of those homes? The second thing is that I think that we're actually reaching a point, at least within the Seacliff and Aptos designated area, that we have to look at whether these caps are too high. And I'd like to come back with a look, a report back in December as to, as to a model for additional restrictions on the number of vacation rentals specifically, within at least our zone, and if there's interest in my colleagues for their zones as well, I think that that's reasonable. Again, we have not built a number of, of homes in my district per year that are converting into vacation rentals. Nobody can argue that there isn't access to visitors serving accommodations in this county. They're never full other than on, on graduation weekend, so I think it's reasonable that we start putting in additional restrictions on that.
I would like in the Loda, if we're going to be looking at it.
So on that direction, then, I think the additional direction will be to come back with what additional caps would look like.
In every district.
In every district. Other than maybe the fourth where it doesn't, nobody's applied in the last seven years. So on item 58, I appreciate the work of our Public Works Director regarding the measure D, sales tax revenue and bonding component. I'll say very bluntly, I was disappointed in the RTC's interpretation of, of the, of the measure. I recognize that they are the entity that controls the bonding, it doesn't preclude us from doing it. I find it curious, though, that they allow the county to manage all of our own resurfacing projects and therefore take on all the financial responsibility and risk for it, all the trail projects and take on all the financial risk and responsibility for it, all the freeway overcrossing projects, and we take on all the risk, but yet we're not allowed to say what we want to do with our money in advance and take on that risk. So I'd like to add additional direction on that the Chair write the Executive Director of the RTC saying that if, if the RTC is not willing to allow the entities to come together to bond, that the RTC then bond as a regional organization so that we can actually get this work done, as we're seeing 30% cost increases on road repairs every single year. We have a funding mechanism that's solid for 30 years. It's absurd to have an entity hold that money hostage when we need to get this work done, and I think that's a real problem. and I think that we've got a willing set of partners here to do it, and it's about time that they actually step up and let us do that. So that'll be additional direction on a letter from the Chair to the Executive Director of the RTC. Thank you.
Great. Supervisor McPherson?
There's a couple of issues that I'd like to address on the consent agenda. On number 20, the heap and cash awards that are coming down. I want to thank Rainey Marr and Elisa Benson for working on these allocations with the Homeless Action Partnership, or HAP. It's complicated. It's a complicated relationship between the state and the county and HAP, but we're working through it, and they are doing an excellent job of getting through that process. I do continue to be concerned about how diffuse these recommendations are. I'm worried that the funds are spread too thin to establish a North County Navigation Center under the mandated timelines. I'm glad that it's worked out in the South County with the assistance of the Salvation Army, as seen in these recommendations today, but I remain concerned about the North County. As outlined in today's report, the 1.4 million recommended by the HAP for the city's acquisition of Seberg in my district will not come back to us for two months. I'd just like to know maybe a little, if I could maybe ask one question, just what's the status of the North County and what's the future, or the nature of the delay at this point? Yeah, maybe if I could, Chair.
Sure. Just going forward.
Good morning, Board. Rainey Marr, Homeless Services Coordinator. Thank you. And this is a complicated real estate transaction. It is taking additional time. We are working in partnership with our Real Property Division and County Council on structuring this and for this and a couple of the other capital investment contracts. We are trying to be very careful and make sure that we've structured it in such a way that there is no possibility that the funds will go unexpended. We did have a meeting just as recently as Friday with the City Manager's Office and their Economic Development Division to talk about the real estate transaction and kind of their progress on it, but we do anticipate bringing that to your Board in August.
Okay. I would look forward to hearing from you in August. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just concerned about how it's gonna be implemented in the North County.
I understand.
And I know you are too, and everybody else is too.
Yep. I share the concern, and we're working through all of the issues to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you. On item number 21, we have a new eight-year lease with Dominion Voting for our new voting systems here, and I think, I want to compliment our County Clerk, Gail Pellerin, on having some community proposal or presentations throughout the county as well as down in the basement of this county. And just to explain a few of the things that are going, it's going to be an enhanced voter experience. I think it's gonna be easier for voters to just have a dot rather than connect the lines. And all voters get paper ballots that will be scanned and tabulated here at 701 Ocean. There's more transparency and more audit options that are available under the system. There's no data stored in these units. The system is not connected to the Internet. And I think that the vote by mail, it's going to the ballot voters in the military and overseas, voters with disabilities, that's going to be a more convenient voting experience for them. Where, as I said, this voting system is being leased for eight years, and there's a dollar-for-dollar match by the state. So I just want to give some comfort to voters coming in the next year's election that we are going to have an election system that's verifiable, transparent, and we have a great oversight with our County Clerk and her whole office. I want to thank them for putting this together after we had been decertified by the state. I joined with, on item 32, I joined with Supervisor Friend on the Age-Friendly Community. I would especially like to thank the Seniors Council and the Area Agency on Aging for being on the forefront of this initiative. They've worked with us very well with the cities. I'm a member of that agency, as is Supervisor Caput, and developing funding for the program. And we really look forward to having a bigger focus on the elderly citizens of our county, making it truly an age-friendly community.
Wow.
On item 41, the HSA Drug Recovery Tracking, I think that, Chair, you might be having a comment on that. I just want to thank the HSA for the report, and I understand there may be some limitations to collecting the data, but we want to make it a data-driven decisions on that. A meeting doesn't go by when we want to thank Public Works for bringing the projects on items number 52 and 3, the storm repairs, especially in my district in Lampico. We have let me know how critical this repair is in the event of an evacuation or fire up there. There's only one way in and one way out and only one lane, so we are very pleased with that. And thank Matt Machado, Steve Wiesner, and the whole Public Works team for getting on that. And we're hopeful there'll be future extension on reimbursements by the Federal Highway Administration at FEMA. And I want to thank Public Works Director and all for his work and communicate that need to Washington, DC. It's an iffy hope right now, but it's gonna have a huge impact onto us if we don't get those extensions and the millions of dollars. I want to just thank them for getting on it and being very, very proactive and trying to make sure that we get those extensions so we can be paid for the work that's been done on our roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Caput?
Yeah, I'll comment on item number 20. There's $2.9 million that's allocated for Santa Cruz County. I think it's an attempt on our part to address the homeless issue that is very complex. It deals with addiction. It also deals with mental health problems and also poverty and shelter and everything. And so we have a partnership with the Association of Faith Communities, the Salvation Army, Community Bridges, Monarch Services, and a contract amendment with a homeless services center. And I think this is gonna be beneficial to both North County and South County, and I believe we're gonna be using that money wisely, and I'm looking forward to seeing these programs. We do have the mental health facility that'll be opening up in South County. I want to thank Schlock for speaking out, and that'll be opening soon. I'm not gonna say a date because there's always something that seems to be holding it up, but it's almost ready to go. Thank you to Clay for speaking out in behalf of the Watsonville Senior Center. They are gonna have a fundraiser August 31st, and hopefully we'll be able to come up with some money for keeping it open. And I'll donate a little money to that, too, also. So, anyway, thank you, and I'm looking forward to, like I said, seeing this money wisely spent in both North and South County addressing the homeless issue. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I just have a couple of comments to add. On item number 22, I want to thank the team for the work on their Integrated Pest Management Report. I think it does important service for our community. I'd also like to see, and I want to appreciate their efforts to reduce fumatoxins and other rodenticides, and ask that next year, the Integrated Pest Management Departmental Working Group also consult with County Fish and Wildlife Commission before next year's report to discuss and evaluate alternatives to the use of anticoagulant rodenticides, and includes that information in next year's report. The goal is to, obviously, is to eliminate the use of anticoagulant rodenticides, which are harmful to wildlife, and hopefully that'll be a productive discussion next year. Similar to what's been said, on item number 38, the SAFE Program, I'd like to thank Sheriff Hart for bringing the Sexual Assault Forensic Examiner Program back to Santa Cruz County to reduce the additional trauma of having to go over the hill in order to be examined. And I think the sheriff showed a lot of persistence and effort to address this need. On item number 41, which is the report back on Drug Medicale Organized Delivery System Program Treatment Outcome Analysis, I'd like to continue this item to the second meeting in August. I just think any time that we're spending an enormous amount of resources that has both tremendous impact on people's lives and the community, there has to be a way to evaluate whether these programs are working. And so hopefully, between now and then, we can see what the alternatives are. So now, I'd like a motion?
I would move the amended consent agenda.
Second.
All right. So we got a motion by Leopold and a second by Friend. These are, this is items 11 through 73.1 with the additional directions and amendments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to our regular agenda, this is item number 7, to consider approval of the Santa Cruz County Operational Plan for fiscal years 2019 through 2021, and direct the CIO's Office to return in January 2020 with the first biannual progress report as outlined in a memorandum of the county administrative officer. Thank you.
Good morning. Chair Coonerty, members of the Board. So I'm Assistant County Administrative Officer Nicole Coburn, and I'm joined today by Senior Administrative Analyst Sven Stafford. As a member of the team supporting the operational planning process, Sven has played a key role in designing the plan document and the website, which we're gonna be showing you today. Together, we'll be presenting the final operational plan and pulling up on your screens the website. So this is our agenda. Most of the presentation's going to be conducted online as we show you how to navigate the site and look up objectives and key steps. We're going to start by providing a brief overview of the operational plan. Then we'll be highlighting a couple of the objectives and key steps and showing that navigation. And then finally, we're gonna talk about how we're going to be updating progress on the plan and updating the website. So this slide shows you or provides an overview of our strategic and operational planning process. We were here last June of 2018 when the Board approved the county's first-ever strategic plan. The plan contains our vision, mission, and values for the county, as well as 24 high-level goals across six focus areas. The strategic plan spans six years, from 2018 through 2024, and is going to be implemented through three two-year operational plans. The county administrative office, along with a steering committee and six subcommittees comprised of county staff from every department, spent this past fiscal year developing the first operational plan, and in May, we presented the proposed plan to the Board, which the Board accepted. Since then, we've been working on making refinements to the plan. The plan adds strategies, of which there are 55 objectives and key steps. The proposed plan itself had 172 objectives across 22 departments, and then since we presented the proposed plan, we've added six objectives for a new total of 178. So here on this slide, we have our six supplemental objectives. These objectives are also shown in the final plan on pages 207 to 210. The objectives that we've added touch on developing an action plan to create an age-friendly community in partnership with the Area Agency on Aging, or Seniors Council. We're also going to be reducing the county's carbon footprint as one of the objectives. We have a new objective on the Hopes Program and engaging more Hopes clients in treatment and reducing arrests. We have an objective that's been added on the Syringe Services Program and establishing targets for that program. We also have a new objective on exiting homelessness and increasing by 15% the number of clients who exit homelessness to permanent housing. And lastly, we have a new objective on AB 109 recidivism and reducing recidivism by 10%. So now that we've discussed some of the major changes, I'd like to turn it over to Sven, who's going to take you to the website.
Good morning, Board. The operational plan website is integrated and expands the existing strategic plan website. As county initiatives such as Primo and Performance Measurement expand, dashboards communicating their results will also be integrated into this site. Before we start looking at it, I'd like to take a moment to thank Tom Milconian and Yang Zhang from ISD for their collaboration and imagination in developing the site with our office. So we'll start the navigation by looking at the plan guide. So the plan guide provides a snapshot to the work that went into the plan's development. The first page just provides basic information on how strategy and objective statements are structured and all of the elements that will allow the public to track objective progress. The second page here shows the framework. Here, we'd like to just make a distinction that the strategic plan goals represent community-wide impacts that we would like to see, and the operational plan is really a blueprint for the individual actions that the county is taking to create that impact. Now, Nicole, talk about the development process.
So I briefly mentioned some of what went into developing the operational plan, but as soon as the Board adopted the strategic plan last year, our office embarked on developing the operational plan. We had involvement of, had the involvement of over 60 staff from every county department. We also had the input of more than 20 county commissions and 50 key informants from various areas, including government, business, and our nonprofit partners. Developing the plan also required a significant effort to train staff and gain buy-in around the process to build a foundation upon which the plan could be built. So in the fall, we spent a considerable amount of time both developing training and delivering that training to staff so that we were all on the same page. In addition, we held open houses around the county in mid-North and South County locations. As we move into plan implementation, we intend to continue promoting and soliciting feedback on the plan. As part of our work, our intern Nathalie Flores also completed her capstone project on providing us with concrete ways that we might improve outreach in South County. We'd like to thank Nathalie for her hard work and contribution to our planning effort. And as many departments mentioned during budget hearings, we are trying to embed our county values and dimensions of equity and sustainability in how we're trying to measure success and achieve our county's goals and vision. So for many of us, this is a new and good way of thinking about our work, and we're currently engaged with our Health and Human Services Departments and our data partners to help bridge this gap. Every operational plan objective is funded through the new two-year budget. We recognize the lack of some of the direct links between these documents, and we're going to be working on fully integrating all of our initiatives, the two-year budget, our operational plan, performance measurement, and future iterations. So with that, I will turn it back to Sven.
So before we dive into the objectives, I'd like to take one minute to talk about the SMART Framework, which stands for Specific, Measurable, Attainable, Relevant, and Time-bound. The framework not only enables the public to track actual deliverables, but also creates a consistent presentation through which different department objectives can be compared. And finally, collaboration is a real hallmark of the plan, and every department objective has a collaborating partner. This is where we introduced what Supervisor McPherson so lovingly referred to as a modern art masterpiece, and now we've made that piece interactive. So you can sort by department and see where the administrative office collaborates. You can also see, for example, Health Services and the strong connection that they have with Human Services. So this is a kind of a neat feature to be able to play around with. So let's look at what the plan looks like. So here you'll see the comprehensive health and safety focus area. In the first column, you'll see the four strategic plan goals, followed by the second column, which are the strategies that fall under each goal, and in the third column, two columns of objectives that fall under each strategy. So you can see that if you change the goals, the strategies change and the objectives change. Similarly, if you change the strategies, the objectives under each strategy change, and this aligns with the way the strategies and objectives are presented in the document. So if we're looking at the health equity goal and the first strategy here, to advance prevention intervention services, you can see we have six objectives that fall under each strategy. prevention intervention services, you can see we have six objectives that fall under that strategy. If, for example, I'm particularly interested in looking at the clinic's clinic wait times objective, I can click on it and I'll get the full objective, the key steps, and the plan references, the collaborating departments, the target of a zero-day average wait time, and the estimated completion date. By closing that box, I go back to the original menu. So, you know, this navigation is fairly straightforward. There is one other neat feature that I'd like to show you. Here in transportation, under regional mobility, the strategy is to improve traffic flow to reduce intra-county travel times, and there's an objective here on SOCal congestion, and the target is to increase the level of service. Now, most people intuitively understand that improving the level of service along this corridor means that, you know, when they get to the Daub and Bus light, they won't have to constantly apologize to their children for using bad words. What they may not know is that level of service is an actual definition that is used by engineers to describe traffic performance, and so we've created this little rollover, which, if you highlight, gives a little further definition of level of service and the exact intersections where we're trying to provide mitigations along SOCal Drive and 41st Avenue. So finally, we have a summary dashboard, the landing page of the operational plan. Here you can see a little box up here that tells you the total number of objectives, the number completed so far, which is zero, and the number in progress, which is 178. You can sort the objectives by timeline. So here you can see all the objectives that are scheduled to be completed in December 2019, and our office will be updating each objective biannually through the site in line with the dates shown here. As objectives are completed, they'll get a little green completed hat and also contain any links to documents and data necessary to substantiate the department's work. You can also sort all the objectives by department. In addition, you can select a collaborating department, so if you wanted to see all the places where Information Services is supporting department's work, they'll sort for you that way. Information Services is by far leading collaborator. You can also sort the objectives. Each one has been tagged to a county value, so all nine values have objectives tagged to them, and additionally, you can sort them by dimensions of equity and dimensions of So as I mentioned at the top, we're working on building out performance measurement and community indicator pieces of the site and plan to be back before the board in the fall with updates on those initiatives, and we're, you know, really happy with the website, and it will be live to the public as soon as the board adopts the plan.
So in summary, this shows you our strategic plan, had our vision, mission, and values with our six focus areas and 24 goals. The county operational plan adds the 55 strategies, 178 objectives, that are SMART, and we've placed an emphasis on department collaboration, as well as our county values, and showing the dimensions of equity and sustainability. And in conclusion, we would like to thank the board supervisors, the county administrative officers, officer, committee members, steering committee and subcommittee members for all of their support and work as we develop the first county's operational plan. This has been a really rewarding year of work, and we're pleased to recommend to the board to first approve the operational plan for fiscal years 2019 through 2021 and to direct the county administrative office to return in January 2020 with a progress update. This is going to allow us to update to the website with the new target data, data in December, and then take a look at that data and report back in January. And with that, we're happy to answer any of your questions.
First, thank you, and I have a just a small detailed question that just occurred to me, which is, in order to get the green hat or check, is it based on the target, reaching the target, or is it based on reaching the objective, or is it based on reaching all the key steps? Because in theory, you could, for not all the, for not all the goals, they're not all, there's, there's different ways to reach the, to finish it off.
Yeah, I think we're imagining reaching the target would, would give you the green hat, and, you know, in theory, the key steps lead to, to reaching the target.
Okay, and what about when the target is different, or is not inclusive of the whole goal? Like I'm thinking of the Hopes program has three goals, or sorry, three objectives, but it only has one target.
Yeah, I think for that, for that one specifically, we'll, you know, we'll make sure that a green hat indicates that all three targets are being achieved.
Great. I'll have more questions, but we'll start with Supervisor Caput.
Yeah, sure. I only have really two questions. Why only 178 objectives? And the other one, why only 55 strategies? So anyway, I just want to thank you for your report, and I think, I think this is a great idea. Want to thank Carlos for initiating this and for all of you that have put, you know, helped out. Thanks.
Yeah, this is kind of unbelievable, but boy, we've come a long way since just a year and a half ago, and to put us in a place where we can let the public know what we want to do, where we want to go, and how we're going to get there is a tremendous thing. It's a tremendous asset for our county in, in implementing programs or carrying out programs, but for letting the public know what we want to do and how we're going to get there. I just, these really quantify how the county is, is going to further support the environment, senior citizens, community members, transportation, housing, all those big issues that we're facing, and without, you know, and those who suffer from addictions and mental health conditions and step to, steps to relieve, or shall we say, decrease the dirty syringe litter problem that we're facing today that's on a lot of people's minds. I think that the important part about this is that the staff, the county employees themselves think they've been listened to, they've helped develop these, these projects, these, these goals and objectives, and there's, there's priorities that we have established, and there's accountability with the process that you've developed. So I just want to say thank you for what you're doing. I want to thank especially the county administrative officer for putting this whole plan in, on the, on the board to say, let's go do this, and boy, it's really been encouraging to see how much the county staff leadership has come aboard and that the public is going to understand where we're going and why we're going and going there and how we're going to get there, especially Nicole Coburn and Sven Stafford. Thank you very much for all your work in this.
Supervisor Leopold.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You know, I was thinking as you were presenting, the, the website is a powerful tool, and the casual observer may not leverage all of its, all of its powers, and you might want to consider taking the video of today's presentation and putting it on the website so people, it's a tutorial to how to use the tools, because in, in watching you do it, there are places that maybe I would have clicked on or maybe wouldn't have clicked on, but knowing that they're there becomes helpful. This operational plan, to me, is very exciting, super challenging, and, and long-needed. To see, to link up how we spend our money with what we're actually trying to do and what goals we're trying to accomplish is a milestone in county governance, and I want to really appreciate the work of both Nicole Coburn and Sven Stafford for leading this effort. We didn't, there is no roadmap that the county had used previously in order to put this together, to work with departments, to work with the community, to try to, to figure out what would be measurable and meaningful, and you, you've really done an excellent job in terms of pulling all those strands together to come up with a plan that is understandable. You can actually read this and know what we're doing, which is not always the case with county or government documents. So thank you for your leadership and, and hard work on this. I think that it will be interesting, as we move through the budget process over the coming years, to continually tie what we're, we say we want to do with how we spend our money, and, and this will be a constantly evolving piece, one that I think will be helpful for us as we look at our budgets into the future, and I know that the commitment from my conversation with both of you is to continue to make that tie together. If there was one thing that I see that is missing or not as well reflected in this plan is work on the environment. Not to say that all the pieces in here aren't important. I don't, I don't mean to say that, but I think when we, one of the values around conservation is around open space protection, how we protect that which is still wild here, and it would be great in the future to see something related to those pieces or the riparian corridors, which people have come to talk with us over the years about changing or updating or reviewing that ordinance. It would be useful, I think, in future iterations to, to talk about that issue area in a way. I don't have a, a, a specific target right now, so I'm not, I'm not going to try to add one, but I think it's something for us to think about in, in the future. I also will look forward to the, the biannual reports. I think that's helpful to do every six months, because I think that we're going to find, as we do that, areas in which those stretch goals may not fall into the attainable area, and we should acknowledge that, and we're going to find some things where we set the bar too low and that we're going to easily get over. And so I think it'll help us strengthen those objectives and plans in the future as we review these in this first two-year iteration. I want to thank all the staff members who participated in the committee to help build this operational plan, the hard work of the departments to think strategically about what issues they want to cover and how to represent their department in achieving the goals of the county. I think we're a stronger county government for having a document like this, and I want to thank everybody who was involved.
Supervisor Friend.
Thank you, Chair. Again, I'll share in that thanks to the staff work, and just a couple of years ago, Supervisor Coenerty and I had met with a number of other counties that had gone down this road, and, and I really think, though, that we're setting a new model for those counties to actually follow, that you've built upon something that while was being done in other places, I think this will be even more accessible, and I think that the next step here will be ensuring that, to Supervisor Leopold's point, that the community really knows how to engage with it, and in a way, obviously, this will be working with Mr. Hop and others, but ensuring that the goals are out there, the milestones are out there, and people can see what we're actually doing, and in areas that we're not necessarily meeting, why and how we can fix that. I think that, that it's, there's an important county story to tell that doesn't get told every day, because people are busy doing the day-to-day work of their jobs, but there's so many accomplishments that would be on this list that are so important and set on priorities that the community asked us to do. So in other words, let's make sure that it doesn't stop here for, and we just don't continually update the plan, but that's communicated out so that the community actually understands on the second part. I think that that's of equal importance to just now doing the work and showing the accomplishments is actually ensuring that people see where we're falling short and where we're not. The goal of this was not just to set a priority set from the community back out, but also have that transparency of whether or not we were doing what we said we would do for the next couple of years, and people can pass their judgment the way that they want at that point, but that's, since we work for them, I think that they would like to see the work that we're doing. But again, this is, I've seen a lot of this stuff through other social innovation centers, and I think that this really is pretty top-notch on the work that you're doing, especially on the, on the website. I thought that was an excellent example to be able to see the grades of local intersections and to have. These are, these are questions that come up at, in community meetings and town halls that we hold all the time, and to have people be able to be empowered to be able to find out this information on their own, I, I think this is exactly where it's going. They just need to know it's there. So thank you for your work. I'm excited to see some of this come into fruition.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I think, to Supervisor Friend's point, you know, we went from really being pretty far behind other counties in having a strategy and plans to, I think, leapfrogging them with this work, and so thank you to you and the entire team, and the fact that it was done across departments, I think, will have not only direct benefits in the setting of the goals, but indirect benefits in building relationships and a common, a sense of commonality where we're all in it to solve the problems, even if the goal is primarily a health services goal or public works goal. Everyone now has, across the county, has more investment in, in addressing that, so I really appreciate that part, and I think it's a, it's part of the cultural change that we're seeing at this county, which is really going to be a tremendous benefit for years to come. Going forward, I would say, one of the things, and I've said this from the beginning, is it'll be okay if we don't reach all these goals, and in fact, I would expect us not to reach all the goals, because some of these goals should be stretch goals, they should be things that will be tough to achieve, and so, you know, as we come back with these biannual reports, I don't think there should be, we should be, we should have an open dialogue about where we're, what we're doing well and what, what's not going well and how we want to address that. So just to set that expectation going forward. I do continue to believe it's really important that we look at our comparable counties when we're looking at how we're doing in specific areas, because we can look at us, look, we can compare us across the state, but this is a huge state, bigger than most countries, and it's not always apples to apples, but when we get into smaller coast, medium-sized coastal counties, I think it, it is very similar, and we can see where we're ahead and where we're behind and what we can learn from those other counties, and then what those other counties can learn from us. So going forward, tying it to the budget will be incredibly important so that in the future, budget hearings will really be about these objectives, and then how the money flows to meet these objectives will be, is also important going forward. But, and then, and then as, as everyone said, making sure that the community has clear access to this platform you built, which is really accessible and easy to use and full of information, making sure that we're getting that out to the people so they can see, see how we're doing. So thank you for your work. I'll now open it up to comments from the public. Whoever wants to come forward.
Hi. I just had a question about, I didn't see on there, maybe I missed, is, is there housing on that plan as well? I didn't see any, but maybe I just missed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a whole focus area on housing.
Okay, there we go, yeah, that's right, okay. So did you guys, did you guys, I just have to look at the website once it's up there, but did you guys put up there, sorry, I'm trying to look over here and also the mic. So did you guys also put in, though, you have affordable housing, I can't see because I don't have my glasses, did you guys put in possible infill or just slight upzoning, like going single-family to duplex or something like that, to try and just kind of pack in a little bit more what we currently have, or is it more just expanding outwards? I don't know exactly what your strategy evolves currently.
Well, why don't you make your comments, and then we'll respond, but now it's your time to speak to us, so.
Oh, okay, well, that was my comment then, I guess. I like to see more of that kind of, maybe allowing for more mixed-use development, you know, commercial on bottom, residential on top, kind of just building up what we already have because of the, because I know the nature of, the nature around here, everybody wants to preserve the environment, so building outwards seems like something that would, you know, possibly hurt endangered species in the area or natives, native flora and fauna, and so if we want to have more housing, which is a crisis in this county right now, I've lived here my whole life and, so living in my parents' guest house, then it would make sense to try and just kind of build on what we already have. So that was just my only comment, I guess, or question. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get to it as soon as public comments.
Good morning. Becky Steinbrenner, resident of rural Aptas. Thank you for this excellent presentation. I am encouraged because I've gone to a number of the public meetings and never really saw a concrete, as I've said before, boots-on-the-ground, how this was, this was all going to be put into actual action that the public could see. And... put into actual action that the public could see and understand. So, I want to thank you for this brief presentation of the website. It's great, and I think will really help the public see what is going to happen. I'm encouraged by the work. I think it is also responsive to the past grand jury's report that government needed to be -- the budget needed to be more evidence-driven and action-driven, so it really addresses the grand jury's findings. And I would like to also acknowledge Supervisor Leopold's request that there be some sort of a tutorial because it is a complex site, and I struggle with computer stuff myself, and many people out in the public do not even use a computer. So, to that end, I would like to ask that there be some sort of follow-up public meetings to launch this, or perhaps on radio or community television PSA, something like that, to really help people understand what it is, how to use it, and to appreciate how powerful it is. I would also like to ask that it be taken as presentations to the local high school government classes because I think this is a really good tool and would encourage youth to get involved in government and really feel that what their input is can make a difference and is demonstrated in the work that you've done here today. And likewise, at senior groups, because a lot of the seniors do not use computers. So, making it somehow available to them would be, I think, fabulous. I want to ask how often the -- I've heard there will be a semi-annual report. How often will the website be updated in terms of real-time accomplishments? And again, I really appreciate that this effort has come from the department heads, from the public, and is being put out there rather than the top-down management that we really have seen in this county in the past. So, thank you, Mr. Palacio, for launching this, and thank you Supervisors for supporting it, and I look forward to seeing this. I just want to add that I would like to see some attention to historic preservation in our county. Thank you very much.
So, I'm one of the people who doesn't have a computer, doesn't want one, doesn't feel good in front of one. I'm glad that it's helping some people, and I hope there's still phone access for older people like me who don't have a computer to talk to someone about what's going on in the county in different aspects. Supervisor Coonerty, you said open dialogue on what's going well and what isn't. I wonder if there'll be critiques in there of what the county is doing. For instance, something you say is going well. Let me just give an example to make it concrete. I'm into reality, concrete checks. You put in these school safety, you call it radar signs that cost about $1 million all over. Radar is a health hazard. It's an expensive, dangerous investment, and you're patting yourselves on the back like this is a good thing. I'm saying, no, it's not. The signs that show school crossing that are bright green or yellow and show someone crossing, those are fine, though don't emit microwave radiation. So, you would be saying this is a great thing the county is doing, and the public can look at that. No, in reality, it's not. Another is that, and this is open dialogue, you want open dialogue, yet you have made it so people cannot comment on the consent agenda items. That's censorship. That's not open dialogue. The other thing you pat yourself on the back for is bringing broadband to the county. That means radiation, and I am really harmed and upset that where I live in Aptos, you've bought 13 cell towers for Verizon 4G and the public right-of-way, which will likely be 5G, in this rural area within a square mile. I didn't ask for that. I didn't get consent, and neither did anyone there. I'm giving you some open dialogue on what you are making look good that is really harmful. So, I don't know where this is in the website, but as someone in my position and an elderly person, I feel this is not a good policy to be putting harmful technologies imposed on the public. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. The brief answer to your question, sir, and you can look on the website and see it all, but there's, you know, many different strategies for housing, including building more ADUs, accessory dwelling units, farmworker housing, mixed-use development, affordable housing projects. We have an urban services line in this county, so there's not going to be sprawl, and it's really -- it's going to happen within the urban boundaries of our county, but it's going to happen in a lot of different ways because our housing challenges are so deep and complex.
Yeah, and I would add that there's also the Sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan, which is our major effort to think about development differently than we have in the past 40 or 50 years.
So, now we have -- we'll be looking at -- do we need to adopt this? Yes, we'll direct -- we need action. Yes, we do.
I would move with the recommended actions and express our appreciation to all involved.
All right. Motion by Leopold, second by McPherson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you for your hard work. Moving on to item number eight is to consider approval of the Measure D five-year plan for fiscal year 2019 and '20 and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum of the Deputy CIO and the Director of Public Works. Mr. Wiesner.
Good morning, Chair, Board members, CIO, and members of the public. My name is Steve Wiesner. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works here with your county, and today I will be giving our annual Measure D five-year plan update. So, just as a reminder for everyone, Measure D was a countywide half-cent sales tax measure that was approved by our voters in November 2016. It provides a 30-year funding source for various transportation projects countywide, and the county road share this next year is estimated at $2.9 million. That number fluctuates with sales, obviously. And as part of the annual requirements for the program, we're required to produce a continuous five-year plan that's approved in a public forum, hence why we're here today. When the measure was passed, Public Works took a survey of the various communities we have in the unincorporated areas of our county, and the three top things that our community members wanted to see was maintenance and repair of our county roadways, mostly in neighborhoods, and to improve safety as well. Okay, so I'm just going to highlight a little bit of what we're going to be doing this summer. The project actually has been awarded. The contractor is making preparations countywide for resurfacing in the various areas of our county. In District One, we're going to be hitting some of the roads in the Live Oak area. The work's going to involve some resurfacing that involves multiple layers of material. We call that a cape seal. So, we'll come through, we'll do some isolated base repairs, we'll slurry it, we'll chip seal it, and then we'll slurry on top of that. In District Two, we're going to be down in the Rio Del Mar area, doing some of the roads in the flats. In District Three, we're going to finish out the project that we started last summer. We had done about two-thirds of Martin Road, so we'll be completing the Martin Road resurfacing project this summer. Now, in District Four, because we have very few roads down there, it takes a few years to build up enough of a bank to do a significant project down there. And so, we're reserving funds for the next couple of years to do a project in next summer. And so, we've been banking some Measure D funds down in the south area of the county due to a significant project proposed for Lakeview Drive. I will note that there were just some minor changes to the plan this year. One of them was to work with District Four Supervisor to rework some of the priorities in South County area. In District Five, we're moving on down to Ben Loman. We had done a portion of Boulder Creek last summer, and so we're going to be working in downtown Ben Loman this summer. Okay, and so, just to also remind your board how we decide which roads we pick and which communities of our county. As you're aware, the county maintains database-driven pavement management system, which basically rates the scores of all of our roads on a pavement condition index, and that's just simply zero being a totally dirt road to 100 being a brand-new road. We use that as a tool to inform us of how to use our limited funds and resources, and so we work with your board, we work with the community members. I will note that today we have with us Matt Machado, our director, and some other Public Works staff members, including our program manager for the pavement management program, Casey Carlson. And earlier this year, we had presented to your board our most recent pavement management survey, and so we're in the process now with our consultant to look at all of our different funding sources that we've had based on our estimates for future resources to come up with a new five-year plan, both for our local roads and for our larger federal aid routes, and those are the routes that carry the larger amount of traffic. And so, we've opted in this year's five-year plan to bank and reserve the fourth and fifth year of the plan. We anticipate next year that we come back with a fully developed five-year plan. Okay, so with that, simply, we have for -- before you today, recommended actions are to adopt the attached Measure D five-year plan for the 1920 fiscal year and to authorize Public Works to submit a copy of the approved board package to the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions? Supervisor Friend.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wiesner, as always. I do have a couple of specific questions to my district in regards to the 2020 plan, which has Se Cliff in it. A couple of streets I saw fell off on 2020, including the Hillcrest component, the Coats component, the west side, in other words, of State Park Drive. Is this just purely a cost-related reality to it?
Some of the roads that did actually fall off were related to other improvements that were happening in that area. I think there were some sanitation projects that needed to be done, and we didn't want to resurface that street before the road got cut into to fix the sanitation line.
Right, so that's in Rio Del Mar. That's on Cliff. That's Cliff and Martin. And that was question number two. I'll get back to the Se Cliff question. So, getting on to the sanitation project, then in theory, I should see Martin and Cliff show up on 2020, but they don't. So, meaning that it was a one-year delay associated with the sanitation work, but it's not showing up to be done. So, is this being now funded as a sanitation-related road project? I mean, is sanitation funding it, or is it still a Measure D project?
No, it should come back in a future year, and I'll look to Casey Carlson. Casey, do you have -- can you?
Go back to that slide. It has.
Can you come up to the podium, Casey?
Yeah. Yeah, there shouldn't be any changes to the plan other than that that project was going to be delayed in the Rio Del Mar area.
Okay, then, in theory, then, it should show up as something that would occur in the next -- it was supposed to be done this summer.
Correct.
Correct. So, but under the attachment that you guys have that I'm looking at, it shows roads anticipated as a 2020 proposed project. Would it not be done immediately after sanitation in 2020 is my point. So, is it not showing up because it's funded through sanitation funding, or is it not showing because you're not intending to do it in 2020, which is just different from what I've been told?
Which road specifically are we talking about?
We're talking about the sanitation projects at Cliff, the entire length of Cliff and the Martin connector.
Yeah, so that's still shown on the five-year plan. It's not highlighted in green because it wouldn't be done in 2020, so it would be done in a future fiscal year.
And most of that has to do with just the timing of the sanitation project.
Okay. So, getting back to it, the sanitation project's supposed to be done so that this would be done next year. So, I'm trying to figure out why it's not showing up as a green highlighted project for next year, considering the sanitation project's supposed to be done by then.
That's a good question. Let us get back to your office on that. That's really in concert -- us working in concert with sanitation to make sure that they're actually going to be able to enact that repair this year.
Okay.
So, it is likely that we would be able to bring that back as a project if they do enact their repair.
Okay, and then on to Casey, to your point, that Hillcrest from State Park, from Marvest to State Park, and Coats from Hillcrest to Se Cliff was originally on the previous five-year plan to be done in 2020. So, that when I said it fell off, it's not there. I mean, it's not highlighted to be done. So, is that just a pure cost? Has there been a cost escalator that required that road to come off? There's no sanitation project occurring there, so.
Yeah. No, so the point is that what's -- the full page is the five-year plan, and so, green is what we think we can get done next year, and that can always be changed with your office if you have a different priority that you would like us to focus on in the next year. We can always change that.
Okay.
This is just -- the green is to indicate what we think we can accomplish next year.
Okay.
Based on current prices, and yes, it is -- it's a fluid situation, right? So, what we show you on this plan is what we anticipate for the next construction season, 2020. It's likely that we would come back with some minor changes as well based on current construction pricing next year.
And if we're successful at the RTC from a bonding component, I imagine we'd come back for a larger discussion about the grouping of these roads that are within specific areas.
Sure, we'd absolutely be able to advance a lot more quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Leopold.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Do you have an idea of what the average PCI is for the roads that are being done this year?
Well, it varies quite a bit, and I think taking a guess at what an average would be would be difficult because I think the rural area of the county varies drastically from, you know, some of the more urban areas. And one thing I can say is that when we do slurry seal treatments, the roads tend to be in pretty decent shape. If they're -- if the PCI is really low, a seal product is not really the right product. And so, it goes along with pavement management theory that we'd be trying to seal, coat the roads that are actually in fairly decent shape, so north of 50.
Okay. And the -- I'm just curious about submitting a plan to the RTC that doesn't have recommendations for year four and five. We're allowed to do that?
We are, and other jurisdictions are doing the same thing as well, in particular for our program because it's a pavement management program. You can imagine how difficult it would be for us to predict in the fifth year what the economy is going to be like then, what the contracting climate's going to be like. And so, you know, we did our best job for the first cut, and we are opting to, you know, to bank the fourth and fifth year. We think we'll be able to come back next year, and it'll be based on current pricing, obviously, with recommendations for what we think year four or five will be at that time. So, yeah, it is typical. Other agencies are doing the same thing.
I think those are all the questions. Thank you for the work.
Welcome.
Supervisor McPherson.
Yeah. I can't go without saying thank you, voters, for approving Measure D so we're able to do any of this. But the fact of the matter is, you can't please them all all the time. And I -- the main criteria is some of your most heavily-traveled areas and residential areas. I mean, that was the biggest percentage that was going from Measure D to address neighborhood roads, in essence. Is that -- was that the most heavily traveled? What was your criteria? Was that basically it?
Right, so basic pavement management theory is always going to tell you to go after your most heavily-traveled roads. They deteriorate very rapidly. When Measure D was passed by the voters, the bucket that we're getting funding for county roads in was in the neighborhood projects bucket. And so, you know, we've made a commitment to try and go after some resurfacing in some of our neighborhoods, which have been neglected, you know, for a couple of decades now. So, Measure D, as it currently stands today, we're really trying to apply towards neighborhood streets.
Right. I probably get -- we probably get as many calls on transportation roads as anything, and I want to thank you for making the tough choice, but the choice had to be made and just addressing what you can with the resources that we have. And I'm just thankful that we have this $2.9 million to get this done from Measure D proceeds. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing this right now. So, again, I want to thank the Measure D voters. This is not an easy task for you, I know, and I think I can understand that you're not wanting to go beyond three years. I mean, that's probably a max of what you can do for anticipation of what you might be able to do in those three years. So, I appreciate your efforts in putting this together. We will get -- I just want to let the public know that we can't do all of this at the beginning, and the first five years, as a matter of fact. But I think that your process of what you've done and how you're going about it is just fine, and I appreciate your efforts, and again, the voters for Measure D.
Thank you. We're appreciative as well. Supervisor Caput.
Thanks.
Thanks. I know you're struggling with the budget and everything, and trying to make all five districts, you know, solid for the next few years. What two projects would you say are like priority for District Four, which would be South County?
Yeah, so on a larger scale, you know, the federal aid routes, the bigger routes that carry a lot of the traffic, including Buena Vista Drive, right, which is right in front of the landfill there, those are, those are big priorities. So Freedom Boulevard, San Andreas, you know, Buena Vista. And when we start looking at projects that Measure D could be applied to, based on the sort of neighborhood criteria, you know, I think, I think Lakeview is a really great road to go after. It's a heavily-traveled road, it's in a neighborhood, it's a cut-through traffic between 152 and 129, and so, you know, I think that's a pretty high priority for that, for us as well.
That one, well, the Lakeview area, that's just about ready to go, right?
Well, so it'll be next summer. We think that we've banked enough money by next summer to be able to enact a project out there.
And I guess along with that, the other one would be, what, 152 and Houlihan and College?
Yeah, certainly that intersection's a priority for us. That's in a different program area, but absolutely, that's a priority.
Okay. And then there's a couple of smaller ones. It's kind of like that preventive, if you prevent something before it gets worse, it's a lot cheaper to fix than after it collapses or whatever. So I guess two of them would be Casserly, there's a washout there not too far from the bridge. It's a difficult fix, but if it does wash out completely, it would be, I mean, it'd be a huge problem. So I guess we're looking at that, and then the other would be Peckham. Peckham Road off of, that's off of Casserly also.
Right.
That's off of.
Carlton, right?
Right.
Yeah, so it's off of Carlton. Those are both storm damage repair projects?
That one could be fixed, I think, fairly.
Peckham's this summer. We plan to pick Peckham, fix Peckham this summer. The other one on Casserly is a larger storm damage repair project that is going to take a little bit more time.
It just, it's, the one on Casserly just sheared off, I guess. And I'm not sure how the engineers figure that out, but it's a tough fix, but it's a lot, I guess, cheaper not to fix it as soon as possible, rather than if it completely washes out.
That's right. It is currently winterized to try and, you know, keep it from getting worse over this next winter, but it's an important project to us as well.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys showing all this interest and getting around, going around, and you can picture what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah.
It's not because we've been out there.
Absolutely.
And I think that's really important. I appreciate that personal connection that you seem to show every district, so thank you very much.
Great. Now it's an opportunity for members of the public to speak just about this item, if they're interested.
Good morning. Becky Steinbrenner. Thank you for this report. I appreciate it very much. I also appreciated the discussion about the prioritization of repairs. I was going to bring up the stretch of SoCal Drive between Rio Del Mar and Freedom that's just a nightmare, but I understand that the Measure D money needs to be focused on neighborhoods. There are, and that brings me to my question, what do you define as a neighborhood? There are a lot of people that live off of that road, up on Monroe, and apartments there. Is that a neighborhood? If it is, then that stretch of road really needs to be addressed, and soon, because it is a major thoroughfare that serves a neighborhood, multiple neighborhoods. My neighborhood on, off of Cathedral Drive has not seen work that I remember in the 35 years that I've lived there, and it's a neighborhood. It's a rural neighborhood with over 300 houses, and it's our only way in and way out, and a fire evacuation route at that. Spanish Ranch Road up in Supervisor Leopold's area also serves a rural neighborhood, and is in such disrepair, their fire department has told them they will not bring a water tender up there because it's not safe. So I would like to ask that those sorts of rural neighborhoods be included in Measure D money, as well as the urban neighborhoods, because the rural neighborhoods also deserve to have attention. And in many cases, such as Spanish Ranch Road, my area, certainly Paulson Road in Supervisor Caput's area, those are neighborhoods, and it is often their only way in and way out. So to preserve their safety and their property values, we do have to give the rural neighborhoods some attention. Thank you very much.
I think Becky's points are well taken, and then it raises the question, where is the money? Why isn't the money for all of these neighborhoods that need this type of repair? And I think of this overall picture of half of our tax dollars are going towards the military budget and to kill people in other countries, and I don't like what our, half of our tax dollars are doing. And I would rather see these tax dollars go towards road repair, parks, schools, and this image comes to mind all the time of this bumper sticker. It'll be a great day when the schools have all the money they need, and the Air Force has to have a bake sale to buy a bomber. As a 30-year public school teacher, retired almost for 20 years now, that bumper sticker of decades ago still has a great deal of truth to it. I'd like to see you advocate for more of our tax money going to county needs and not be siphoned off into the military budget. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. I will note that because of the storm damage, and that the federal government, for the first time in anyone's memory, is denying emergency repairs, that we're actually spending a disproportionate amount of our budget that we thought we'd be spending on urban areas on rural areas, because the Trump administration is deciding to play politics with federal emergency dollars. So it's not even a matter of redirecting money in the federal budget from military, it's trying to get the traditional money that was always, has always been available to communities after disasters, and we're being denied that. And it's having a huge impact on our ability to provide services across the county, but also specifically in our urban areas. Is there any?
Chair, I will just say that I'm grateful also for the voters passing Measure D, because it did allow us to get money into the rural areas in a way that we didn't. The first, I know in my district alone, the first year of Measure D, that's where we spent all the dollars. So there's a lot of needs in the community. We spend every dollar we have on roads. We took action, and we will take action later today, to take $2 million out of reserves to spend on roads. So this is a board that's committed to ensuring that we have adequate funding for infrastructure, based on the limits that we have in terms of the county budget. We're going to continue to try to find ways, whether that through bonding, through other means, to fund infrastructure, but this is a critically important role of government, and we're going to try to meet the needs of the community. I would move the recommended actions.
Got a motion by Leopold, a second by Friend. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you for your work. Item number nine is to continue a public hearing to consider certification of the vote results for county service areas. Number 15, Huckleberry Woods. Number 17, White House Canyon. Number 26, Hidden Valley and Muir Drive, the Muir Zones. Number 42, Sunlit Lane. Number 58, Ridge Drive, Zones 3 and 4. Number 59, McGaffigan Mill Road, and to take related actions as outlined in a memorandum of the Deputy CIO and the Director of Public Works.
Good morning. I'm Sonia Lykins, Administrative Services Manager for Public Works. Thank you for reading off all the CSAs. I don't have to do that. I just want to mention that the increase in assessments were requested by the residents of the CSAs, not by Public Works or the county. We have the, I have the ballot tallies, if you're interested in having that for each of the votes. We had one that failed, and the rest were all passed by the residents. If you have any further questions, I can answer them.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I would move the recommended actions on all these CSAs.
Motion by Leopold, second by McPherson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number 10 is to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 8.04 of the Santa Cruz County Code pertaining to the county election campaign contribution control, and to schedule the ordinance for final adoption on August 6, 2019, as outlined in a memorandum of the county clerk. Ms. Pelleran, thank you for waiting patiently for this item.
Sure, my pleasure. Thank you.
Happy belated birthday, by the way.
The what?
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you, thank you. So, yes, we're bringing this ordinance back after your feedback from the last time I was here. So we have kept that third pre-election statement, and the trigger for filing the 410 at 1,000, and we put back in the restrictions in the county ordinance to limit campaign contributions for businesses and labor unions. And everything else stayed the same with the increase in the cap on contributions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions?
No, I'll just say I appreciate the work of our Elections Department.
Thank you.
The preview of the new ballots the other day were very good. I didn't get to see it, but my staff all went down and checked it out. It's pretty amazing, and I appreciate working with us on this, on this ordinance to get it, to be tuned right.
Thank you. On that note, on the voting system, they did leave me with a tablet and the ballot, so I'm happy to do, you know, presentations to any organization, so let me know.
Thank you.
Great. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, and Supervisor Caput.
I just briefly, maybe for the public, if some people watching on television.
Your microphone, please.
You can explain the limits, you know, succinctly. It's just pretty much two changes, right?
Right, so for individual contributions, we moved it from 400 to 500, and then we built in a $25 increase every two years, and that will start January 22.
And everything else stayed the same?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, well, and then we changed the filing deadlines for those pre-election statements to conform those with the Political Reform Act.
That's because they moved the primary up?
Lots of reasons.
Sure. That makes it really tough for somebody running now.
Right, right. So we're conformed with, our ordinance matches the Political Reform Act, except for that one additional third pre-election statement, which we keep.
Yeah. You're going to have to knock on doors during Christmas.
Yes, I get to be here designing ballots.
That's not good. Okay, thank you.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
I would move the recommended action.
Motion by Leopold, second by McPherson.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. convene for our continued budget hearings and our last-day agenda. First, we'll start with item number 56, which is consideration of late additions to agenda corrections, additions, or deletions. Mr. Plausius, do we have any?
Yes, there are a couple of corrections on the regular agenda. Item number 57, Attachment B should read Packet Pages 63 through 186. There's also additional materials revised memo, Packet Page 6, and additional materials revised Unified Fee Schedule Addendum, Attachment C, Packet Page 15. And then on item 59, there's additional materials revised, Attachment I, Packet Page 60.
All right. So let's move on to item number 57, which is the Unified Fee Schedule. Public hearing to consider the resolution approving amendments to the Unified Fee Schedule for fiscal year 2019, 2020, including the addendum as provided in the reference budget documents and outlined in the memorandum of the County Administrative Office. First, I'll ask if there are any questions. Seeing none, I'll ask now, ask if there's any public comment to this item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back for consideration.
I move approval of all the items with the five-fee schedule.
All right, so we have a motion by Leopold, second by McPherson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 58, which is to consider the continuing agreements list for 2019, 2020, including the addendum, and take related outline, actions as outlined in a memorandum of the CIO. Any questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board.
That's okay.
Is there a motion?
I would move the recommended action.
All right, motion by Leopold, second by Friend. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 59, this is the, consider the last-day reports, items 2A through 2J, for the 2019-2020 proposed budget, as outlined in a memorandum of the CIO. I'll ask if there are any questions or comments. Supervisor, Supervisor McPherson?
Yeah, I'd just like to, on the waste stream assessment for syringes, I'd like to reiterate that the goal we're interested in here is developing a plan to mitigate the syringe waste problem in our community. The hazardous impacts that they've, are considerable, and many community members are blaming the county for those reports that we've been hearing recently. Of course, we support the harm reduction among IV drug users, and, but we also support reducing the harm of dirty needles being inflicted on our public spaces. That's a serious health hazard now, that I think that our Health Services Agency needs to address more, more, and I would like to make a motion on that, but I don't know if there's anybody else that would like to discuss on any other items. I'd also like to talk about the probation grants and just congratulate, but I could, I would like to make a motion that we direct the Health Services Agency report back to the board on September 24 with a comprehensive plan to clean up and prevent needle litter countywide, using existing funds in the Health Service Agency budget that don't, won't have an impact on the general fund. I think we would be able to do that.
Okay, well, I'm supportive of that motion. And then the overall items, I'd say, you got Downtown Streets Team cleaned up 6,000 needles in the city of Santa Cruz last year. The City Parks Department cleared up 4,000 needles. Then if you add in schools, other departments, and citizens, you're probably looking at 10, an additional 10,000 needles, which is a major public health issue, and we have to, we have to have a plan to address it.
Yeah, I look forward to the, to the study with the California Department of Public Health, and their work to try to figure out new ways that we can do it. I also look forward to hearing from the city of Santa Cruz about their interest in placing disposal kiosks at places in the city. I'll just comment on a couple of the other items on here. I too want to acknowledge the probation department for their great work in getting nearly $7 million worth of grants into our community. That will not only provide really great services and increase public safety, but $7 million into the community over a couple of years is a nice boost. And I also want to thank General Services, I think it's on this item, that is going to be adding money to the Resource Conservation District to help with the Fire Safe Council.
Great. Any other questions or comments? I'll just give my, in addition to supporting the direction from Supervisor McPherson, just give my thanks to all the departments, the budgets. The budgets are big and challenging documents, and then to pull the last bits together over a short period of time is always a challenge, and I'm just grateful for everyone's work. Is there any members of the public who'd like to speak to us about these last-day reports? Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
I make the motion that we approve as directed with the additional direction.
All right. So, we got a motion, and motion by McPherson.
I'll second it. Do you know what the additional direction is? Okay.
We got a second by Friend. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 60, as the Board of Supervisors of the Redevelopment Successor Agency, consider and authorize the auditor or controller tax collector with concurrence of the CIO to make necessary year-end adjustments and adjustments for 2019-2020 due to increases and decreases in available financing and approve the 2019-2021 Redevelopment Successor Agency budgets as referenced in the outlined budget documents and memorandum of the CIO. Are there any questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board.
I would move the recommended actions for the Redevelopment Successor Agency.
I'll second.
Motion by Leopold, second by Friend. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. And then item number 61 is to consider the 2019-2021 County of Santa Cruz Proposed Budget, concluding actions and authorize the auditor or controller tax collector with concurrence of the CIO to make necessary year-end adjustments and adjustments for the 2019-2020 due to increases and decreases in the available financing and approve the 2019-2021 County of Santa Cruz Proposed Budget, including supplemental last-day and concluding report items as outlined in a memorandum of the CIO.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I'd like to make some comments on this. Relative to the state budget, I'm glad to see an additional investment from the state on the homelessness and affordable housing issues. Those are big issues statewide and certainly in our county. And I'm very glad to see the ongoing fix on funding and the in-home support services over the next four years. That is a huge comfort zone for us to enjoy because we have been on top of this, and the in-home support services are invaluable to our community. On the road repair work, I'd like to say, I think it's, to commend the Auditor's Office and the CIO for recommending a creative plan on how to address these repairs that are more than we can address, really, in any one year, but we're seeing what we can do and how to get there. And that includes borrowing $2 million from our natural disasters reserve and $5.2 million from our workers' compensation reserve to be repaid through the green waste recovery vehicle impact and franchise fees, as well as the state gas and PG&E franchise agreement. It's complicated, but I thank you for addressing this very, very serious problems, and hopefully Congress will address future federal reimbursement deadlines. This could be $35 million of additional repairs at stake in Santa Cruz County alone, which represents half of the damage of those storms statewide. It's pretty, it's unbelievable how much we were hit in those storms, but I really do appreciate the efforts that were made by the Auditor's Office and the CIO to help us address those concerns as quickly as we can. And also, for the Felton Nature Discovery Park, thank the CIO's office and the Parks Department, the Felton Library Friends, for working together to close the gap between a very high bid and our budget to get this project started. The library park is meant to go, and the park are meant to go hand-in-hand, and we look forward to the opening in early 2020. And once that's done, I think the Boulder Creek Library will start a remodeling project as well. So, very appreciative of the work that the Auditor's Office and the CIO has done on this, and for the entire budget for that matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Supervisor Leopold?
I think he wanted to say something.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. I want to thank everybody for all the hard work they put in, you know, for this whole budget and putting it together so we can vote on it. I think everybody's tried to be fair, and a comment on libraries, how important they are. My daughters, the eight-year-old twins, they read some books, Dolphin Tale 1 and 2, and then they wanted to get the, after they checked the books out and read them, they wanted to see the movies, the DVD, I guess, or whatever. So, the only one that had them was the Brant Safori branch here in Santa Cruz, and I went over there, and they were able to check it out, even though I have a Watsonville library card. I filled out a quick form and everything. So, anyway, that's the importance of it. So, I've got to take those DVDs home today and show them to my daughters. So, anyway, thank you for all the work you've done on the budget, and we're, that's a comment, and then we're going to have public comment, and then we'll have motions. Okay.
I'm waiting for my invitation to movie night at the Caput House. I want to thank Christine Maury for the work that you do on the budget, putting together all these different pieces from all the different departments is a magic trick each year. And I appreciate the work that we all have done, every department, the board, the CIO's office, to manage our resources wisely, and I'm grateful for the voters for passing Measure G last fall. We're in a better shape than most jurisdictions. It doesn't mean we're free and easy. We still have to do a good job managing the resources, but this budget expands in some areas. With the operational plan, we now have something that, not only a budget that states our values, but a vision document that speaks to those goals and an operational plan to figure out how we'd actually achieve them. It's a new era for our budgeting process, and I appreciate the leadership from our CIO to assemble the staff, design the process, so we can look at things differently here to be more transparent and to meet the needs of the community. So, I appreciate the work of all 2,400-plus employees at the County of Santa Cruz because without them, these documents don't mean much. But by working together, we're helping move Santa Cruz forward, and I'm grateful for that opportunity, and thank you for all the work to help make it happen.
Thank you.
Great. And I want to invite our CIO to say a few words.
Yes, I wanted to thank the board for your support over the last two years and your support of this new process that we're doing. I know that you have been very supportive from the beginning, and in fact, you pointed me to some models in other counties, which we helped, which helped us in our path. And I agree with some of your earlier comments that I think we not only have emulated some other counties, but we've surpassed. It's amazing the work that our staff has done. And so, I want to acknowledge my staff in the County Administrative Office, especially Christina Maury, who's done an amazing amount of work, and Nicole Coburn, Elisa Benson, and Melody Serino, and all of our analysts, in addition to the department heads, the departmental staff who work on these budgets. It's a huge lift every year doing the budget, and this year and the last two years, we've actually added on to the workload. We've added on a strategic plan, which was a very big effort, and then this year, we even upped the effort in putting together a two-year budget and a very detailed operations plan, all while doing the new primo continuous process improvement. And this is all done without any new staff, just making our staff take on additional responsibilities and having them work a little bit differently, and they've done an amazing job. It's just incredible. There are some counties that have whole offices of continuous process improvement or performance measurement or strategic planning, and we've done it with our existing staff, and we only have done it because of the cooperation of the departments. So, I wanted to thank all of the staff, tell them how much I appreciate all their work and how proud I am to be in this organization at this time. It's a very proud moment this morning when I was sitting here, not only watching our staff and demonstrate what they've done over the past year, but also seeing the new staff that are coming. It's just a very proud and hopeful moment for the county. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership. And it is, you know, it's, I'm not sure budget documents are meant to evoke a lot of emotion, but when you think about the amount of work and the collaborative work that went into this, and then Supervisor Caput mentioned, the good results that come out day-to-day where people may not even connect it back to the budget document, there's a lot to be proud of, and to have our finances be in a good shape is something we should also be grateful and cognizant of and committed to. So, thank you very much for that work. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Let me make, yeah, one thing I wanted to stress, too, is I think all of us get complaints about, of course, roads, and all the districts are getting their fair share. I want everybody to know the District 4 is getting a fair share. All of us have roads when they call up and they say, "This road hasn't been fixed." It's because there was so much damage that was done two years ago during the big storms. And I think every one of us has big areas where we can't get to every road. We are working on them, and we are working very hard, and we are getting a lot of major roads funded and fixed in every district. And so, I think we all, you know, understand that. And then I will, we're going to have a motion, and then I'll...
You can make it.
Well, you know, I'll make a motion, but I do have one exception.
I'll move the recommended budget as we approved from the last week.
All the actions on item number 61, the recommended actions, I would second that.
Okay. So, we got a motion by McPherson and a second by Leopold.
I'll be voting yes on everything. I will make one exception. That'll be on, I'm voting no on item under Core Investments, page 156, and that's $67,000 taxpayer money of Planned Parenthood Marmonti.
Okay. So, I think we can still take this all in one motion and register a no vote. Okay? So, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So, it passes unanimously with the exception of Supervisor Caput voting no on that particular item. And with that, we are adjourned, and thank you, everyone, for your work.